Someone have their TV on? I hear an echo.
No.
Okay, stop. All right.
You're all set to begin.
I'll call the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, August twenty third, two thousand and twenty-three. To all persons interested in or affected by the action, zoning board of appeals, you are hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the general laws of the Commonwealth Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. The zoning board of appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access to this meeting shall be provided in the following manner. Meeting will be televised via channel eighteen. I believe it might now be channel eight. Uh, and may be viewed via the channel eighteen website at HTTP colon slash slash streaming eighty-five dot town of Barnstable dot U S slash cablecast public site. Real-time access to the zoning board of appeals meeting is available by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed to zoning board of appeals by utilizing the Zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID. The Zoom link is HTTPS colon slash slash town of Barnstable dash U S dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight three nine five one four six four eight eight zero, or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, and entering the meeting ID eight three nine five one four six four eight eight zero. Applicants representative and individuals required or entitled to appear before the zoning board of appeals may appear remotely and may participate through accessing link or telephone number provided above. Documentary exhibits and or visual presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot M A dot U S so that they may be displayed for for remote public access view. Copies of the applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two or email anna dot Brigham at town dot barnstable dot M A dot U S. I'll first call the meeting to order with introduction of board members, president, um, Aaron Webb.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Paul Pennard.
Present.
Herb Bodenseek.
Present.
And Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
All right, so we have, um, and I'm I'm chairing the meeting. Um, so we have five spa, we have six members present currently. Um, notice of recording, please note this meeting is recorded and broadcast on channel eighteen in accordance with M G L chapter thirty-eight, section twenty. You must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting and please make their presence known. Seeing none, um, the first order of business was minutes from July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So move, Paul.
A second?
Denise, second.
All right, and a roll call vote. Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
Yeah, I'll take where it's on.
Okay, well, and I am in favor, so the the, um, minutes are approved. Uh, we have no old business tonight, so moving straight to new business. An appeal number of two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one eight Cape Cod five cents savings bank has petition for a variance in accordance with section two forty dash sixty-five signs in B U B H B H O and S D one, sorry, uh, one districts petitioner seeks a variance to allow for four signs where two are allowed and to install an oversized directional signs to replace existing directional signs. The subject property is located at one fifty-seven Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map three one one as parcel zero seven five. It's located in the residence B R V zoning district and the highway business H B zoning district. Uh, so sitting on this will be our regular members Herb Bodenseek, Paul Pennard, Aaron Webb, and we'll have Denise sit on this because I'm not sure what the status of Larry is. Um, and I'm not sure who we have here. I see Mr. Tellerman. Bert, if you want to go ahead and introduce that.
Sure, um, so we have, um, Gary McCoy from Poyant, who's going to be doing the, uh, kind of the intelligent talking here. Um, I am the president of Cape Cod Five. I'm here to, uh, answer any questions that might might come up and with we with me are my colleagues. Uh, Andrea Ponte, who runs operational services for the bank and is involved in kind of all uh, building and related and permitting activities and 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 Chris Raiber, who is our head of real estate. So, um, I'll go back to you, Mr. Chair, and Gary's gonna do the talking for us.
All right, Gary, whenever you're ready.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Um, I didn't know if we were gonna, do you guys pull up the drawings? Or does everybody have the drawing C N D in front of them or has had a chance?
I have them in front of me. Um, Anna Ken screen share if if you'd like us. She can usually put it up onto the screen.
Yeah, if 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 need be, that's fine. If not, that that that's fine, too. I think, um, if everybody's reviewed the package, uh, what we're really looking to do here is replace some signs that are existing on the building with some signs that are basically uh, a little bit smaller than what's there today, uh, but in the same location. And, um, likewise with the directional signage, uh, the directional signage that we're proposing is a little a little bit different, um, a little more modern. It doesn't have the little pole sticks that you usually see. Um, so it's a little more, uh, contemporary looking, matching the color scheme and whatnot of the building and the logo. Um, so the fact that most of this or all of this stuff is existing, it's really just a it's just an upgrade. Um, the I think you guys probably got the full package. You know, that has the ground sign in it and, uh, you know, one of the other wall signs, but we already have permits for those, so we're really just talking about these directionals and the two nonlet signs on the building. Um, I can go through the directionals, uh, that we're requesting. There are four of them that are located at two curve cuts. Uh, one on the west side of the building, one, um, and another pair on the east side of the building. So that's four signs there. And then there are two additional ones, one that you will see as you're exiting the drive-through uh, canopy, sort of direct you out of property. And then there's also one internal of the parking lot to direct you to get to the, uh, the drive-through canopy itself. Pretty pretty typical stuff. Um, it's as it relates to directional signs. And then the two signs that we're proposing on the building as replacements, again, uh, basically like for like of what you have currently or what we have currently, uh, just a little bit more of a modern look. Uh, and the signs are actually a little bit smaller. Um, I know we've got criteria we have to meet to, uh, to to secure the variance, and, um, I'd like to go through the three, uh, criteria if you'd like.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay, great. So the the first one is, you know, related to topography or conditions of the, uh, the land or the job site um, with where it's located. And this particular, uh, business is about a hundred and twenty feet setback from the street, so we have a significant setback. Uh, most of the businesses along that road are what we refer to as streetscape. You know, they're right, they're right up close to the road and they're easily viewed, uh, from the street. Uh, we also have mature, uh, plantings. Uh, this bank's been here for over twenty years, so there's some mature trees out front. So, uh, on number one, um, we're looking at those, uh, couple of items as hardship as it relates to the property conditions. Uh, the second, uh, criteria is that um, the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, uh, to the petitioner, and I would say the fact that we've always had these signs, these we're replacing like for like. Um, and if we were to be have to lose, uh, one of the existing signs, uh, that would pose a hardship to, uh, the applicant. Uh, we 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 think we're, again, just replacing something that's always been there. Uh, the third criteria is that the relief can be granted without sub substantial detriment to public good. And I would go back to that number two, uh, uh, hardship that again, these things have been here for over twenty years. I don't believe this created any hardship or um, or detriment, I should say, to the public good or the neighborhood. I don't think anybody's had any complaints. Um, so I think we meet that criteria, um, as well as the prior two. And, uh, with that explanation, I would, uh, request or, um, you guys consider an approval on this application as presented.
Thank you very much. Um, to everyone on the board, have any questions for the applicant or representatives? I'm seeing, uh, Aaron, do you have something? Go ahead.
I I guess my only real question right now would be, are the signs illuminated that are currently in place?
The signs that we're requesting, uh, and that we're to replace are non-illuminated. There are two signs that are currently permitted on the job site, or at the bank, I should say, that are are illuminated. One is the ground sign.
Yep.
Which is already permitted. And then there's a sign over the main entrance on the north facade of the building over the doors. Uh, that has a halo illumination, but those are already permitted, so we're not asking, uh, relief on those.
And the smaller directional signs will be illuminated from the on the top or?
So.
No, no, sorry.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yep, I see that. I'm looking at the the street, uh, Route twenty-eight. Um, the street sign that is already currently illuminated and will continue to be, obviously, but from the inside versus a fixture on the ground.
Yes, sir.
Gosh. That's it for me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Paul.
Um, first of all, I wanted to comment that the, uh, uh, the diagrams of the signs with the person, uh, in the background in shadow is extremely helpful. It's the first time I've seen that, and that really, um, really simplifies, uh, in terms of what you want. But I would like to go back to the hardship. Just would you state once again what the hardship, uh, solution is?
Uh, so the three, I'll just paraphrase them if you don't mind. Um, the first one would be the, as it relates to the conditions of the property or unique characteristics, is the setback and the obstruction of, uh, mature, uh, trees along the front. Uh, we're over a hundred feet setback from the street. The second one would be that, um, if the, uh, ordinance was, um, enforced, uh, strictly, uh, and we had to re- remove two signs that we currently have that would certainly present hardship to the bank. Um, so we're just asking to retain what we what we already have in place. Um, and then the, uh, third criteria was that, um, we wouldn't be, uh, creating any detriment to public good. Um, because, and again, the reason that wouldn't be happening is because these signs have been in place for over twenty years. We haven't had any complaints or issues.
Right. Now, the two signs that are being replaced or that would that would have to be removed, I guess, are directional signs?
There are two signs that are on the building. One is on the west side and one is on the east side. They're up in the upper cable area.
Right.
Currently, they're like a circle oval type sign. Um, and again, these are old. They've been up there a long time, so we're upgrading them with a with a fresh logo and a more modern look. We're just having individual letters instead of having a big placard. So the signs are actually, um, going down in size, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Denise?
No, sounds pretty clear cut to me.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it it's a, I mean, it's sort of frustrating that they have to be before us for it. Um, but I I understand our sign ordinance and why it's the way it is. Um, I guess we can go to open public comment. Uh, Anna, we didn't receive anything, any comments, correct?
That's correct.
Is anyone here to speak to this? All right, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second poll.
And I need a roll call vote. Herb Bodenseek.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so that closes public comment, brings it back to the board to deliberate or make findings. Does anyone have any comments or seventy-one willing to make findings? Just remember it is a variant, so we have to, you know, check our boxes on the three prompts.
I'll make finding.
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, first of all, there's, I guess, there's no comment from or no questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Uh, this has to do with appeal number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh one eight Cape Cod five cents savings banks. Cape Cod five cents savings bank has petition for a variance in accordance with section two forty dash sixty-five signs in B U B H B H O and S D one districts. The petitioner seeks a variance to allow for four signs where two are allowed and to install an oversized directional sign to replace existing directional signs. The subject property is located at one fifty-seven Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Mass. As shown on map, Mass., as shown on assessors map three eleven as parcel zero seven five. It's located in residence B R B zoning district and highway business H B zoning district. I find that owing to the circumstances related to soil conditions, shape and topography of such land structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not altering, not affecting generally the zoning district which is located. I find that the difficulty of having a setback of significance of a hundred and fifty feet uh, certainly is a detriment to, uh, signage and also the mature trees that are clearly in a way should, um, also add to this problem. I find that a literal enforcement of provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner, and to remove two signs, existing signs on the building. Um, certainly would. You'll have to excuse my son's golden retriever who wants to end. Um, I find that these signs, uh, you know, why why remove them? I mean, they're they're already there and, um, and they should be there. Number three, desire for relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. I mean, those years, those signs have been there for, you know, twenty years, and by the way, the new signs look much better than the old signs, and so uh, I think that the, uh, public good, um, would be enhanced by this. Those are my findings with conditions.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, so Paul's made a motion to approve the variance, um, based on those findings. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Herb Bodenseek.
All right, a roll call vote. Uh, Herb Bodenseek.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, Paul, do you have conditions?
I do. I have conditions one through three. Um, as outlined in staff report uh, of some date.
August twenty-third.
August twenty-third. When's the August twenty-third? And, um, I want to know if the, uh, petitioner is in acceptance of these?
So, yes, I'm reviewing them, um, in hand.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I apologize. The, uh, staff report is dated August tenth.
I I knew it. I knew it.
I was just about to correct myself, but I couldn't.
Yes, we 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 agree with the findings.
Okay, those are my conditions.
All right, so roll call vote on the conditions. Herb Bodenseek.
I'm in favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so Mr. McCoy, you have your, um, your variance.
Thank you for your time, everybody. We appreciate it.
Thank you for the work to put all that together to show it to us in a very clear way.
Great. Have a good evening. Thank you.
You, too. Uh, next up, appeal number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one nine, Kevin Y. and Corey L. Villant have applied for a special permit in accordance with section two forty dash forty-seven to accessory dwelling units, A D Us. The applicants seek to remove and replace an existing accessory structure with a new accessory dwelling unit, A D U. The applicants also seek to modify special permit number two thousand and twenty dash zero three eight to allow further build-out of the property for the accessory dwelling unit and additions to the principal dwelling. The subject property is located at thirty, uh, three fifty-eight Flint Street, Marson's Mills, Massachusetts, as shown on assessors map one zero one as parcel one two one. It's located in the residence F R F zoning district. Um, again, Paul, if you're okay to stay here sitting on this, it'll be myself, Herb, Paul, Aaron, and Denise.
Okay, let her rip.
All right, um, I believe we have the applicant here. Um, you can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain. I'm representing the owners of the property, Kevin and Corey Villant. Uh, they are, uh, proposing to, uh, raise and replace a accessory structure, uh, to create a affordable dwelling unit that is in excess of nine hundred square feet. And so we need a special permit under two forty dash forty-seven point two C four, uh, to allow that. We also are seeking a removal of a condition, uh, from a prior special permit that basically stayed, there's a condition that states that there's no further build-out of the property. Um, I'm not, I wasn't involved in that prior permitting, uh, so I don't know if that was just, that's just a standard condition in town. Um, but I would suggest that, you know, what we're proposing here, uh, would not be substantially more detrimental. What we're proposing is, if not for the excess of the nine of the nine hundred square feet, would be allowed as a right. The additions that we're proposing conform to existing zoning requirements. So again, under, uh, the zoning bylaw, there was no condition in the permit, uh, the prior permit, these things would be allowed by right. So what we're proposing is, uh, a accessory dwelling unit of one thousand three hundred and eighty-four square feet. So four hundred, four hundred and eighty-four square feet larger than what's, uh, allowed as a right. The existing accessory structure is one that has one thousand three hundred and eighty-four square feet, so we're not increasing the size of what's existing. The relocation will actually improve a non-conforming setback to Flint Street, so the existing accessory structure is non-conforming. By relocating the the, uh, A D U, it will become a conforming condition, so that's an improvement to the property. Um, we're also, uh, stating, you know, by A D U, you know, we're also, it's a benefit to the town by increasing, uh, the, uh, dwelling, uh, rental stock in town. So, and then again, as far as the additions are concerned, if there was nothing in this prior permit, they would be allowed as a right because they conform to, uh, existing zoning criteria. Uh, so that's, you know, my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, thank you very much. Um, back to the board. Does anyone have any questions?
Could you just review again what the size of the main property is in square foot and what the A U A D U is?
So the A D U will be proposed at one thousand three hundred and eighty-four square feet. The, and it's totally, um, application. So the, um, the principal structure now has two thousand one hundred and thirty-two square feet of gross floor area. With the additions, that will increase to four thousand four hundred and four square feet. But again, those additions will comply with current, uh, setback requirements in the in the R F.
Correct.
Uh,
Go ahead, Paul.
Can you explain, there's an existing building uh, down towards the, uh, pond. Wha- what is that?
I think it's a like a boathouse type structure. Uh, we're not proposing any changes to that. I did provide, uh, a presentation with some photographs. But I believe that's what it is. We're not, as I said, we're not proposing any changes to that structure.
Okay.
So there's no living, there's no living space in there?
Not, yeah, not, there's no living space by knowledge.
Uh, one just point of clarity, you had said in in the beginning of your presentation, you had said the word affordable. Is this intended to be an affordable unit or?
And then accessory, I apologize.
Okay.
So an A D U.
And and they're intending to rent it?
That is correct, and in in compliance with your, uh, with your bylaw.
How many bedrooms is it gonna be?
Three.
I think the floor, I think existing is two, but I believe that the, uh, proposed floor plan is only two bedroom.
Well, do you think or do you know?
I'll pick it up right now.
The application stage three.
Yeah, I think the floor, but I that may have been a mistake. I believe it's.
Yeah, uh, again, I can't remember our bylaw off the top of my head, but I thought we were limited to two anyways, right?
We are.
We are.
Two, unless, again, you get a special permit, so I'm just, I'm asking for two.
Okay.
You're you're, I'm sorry, that was quickly. You're asking for two?
That's what he said, yeah.
Okay, is there a is there a floor plan available for two or is this?
Yes, it was also submitted with the application. I'm just trying to look it up.
It actually looks like proposed is two from the floor plan I see on.
Right, that's what, that's my understanding as well.
Kitchen, great room, master bedroom, bedroom with a detached sort of lofty type. Is it a two-floor or do you know?
But.
With a living room in addition to the great room. I can't tell if it's a two-story or not.
You know, Aaron, which which of the drawings?
I'm on the first document in the in the meeting materials.
The one that says progress print guest house, right? That one?
Correct. Yep, you scaled down to page five or six or seven. Uh, they show the existing floor plan of the guest house, which has a three-bedroom existing, and then the proposed right below it, which is
Right, that is.
Eight.
Yeah, A A three point one has the proposed floor plan, which is only showing. So that is what the request is, two bedrooms.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going, we're going from three to two, is that correct?
And two is allowed as a right, so we're not asking for a special permit to increase your requirement of two bedrooms.
All right.
The only thing we're asking for is the increase in the 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 increase in the size over nine hundred square feet.
Any other board members have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Herb Bodenseek, um, I might suggest next time you endeavor on such a special permit request that you change your drawing so that they don't say guest house and that they say accessory dwelling unit. I I don't, I don't really see myself, uh, agreeing to anything over nine hundred square feet. I don't see why you don't get tit for tat when you're tearing a structure down. I don't, I don't see, um, anything that compels me to approve this. Especially after the last, uh, one in, uh, two thousand and twenty where, uh, it's that point you wanted, your clients wanted to use the existing structure for overflow of guests during holidays and during summertime and things like that. Uh, you know, I might have been born in the morning, but it wasn't yesterday morning, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Denise, Aaron?
No, I'm just trying to understand that, like, we're giving another permit for a larger A U D than is prescribed, nine hundred square feet.
What's, um, attorney, what's the current square footage of the existing guest house?
It's thirteen eighty-four, so that's the gross square footage. We're not changing anything. We're not making it any bigger. We're just replacing it in kind, other than relocating it, which again, will be a become a conforming structure, so it is an improvement.
And you said that the current, uh, building one, the main house, building one, the main house, is twenty-one hundred square feet, but they have proposed plans to expand that house?
That is correct.
And they don't need a permit for that because that's all it just brings?
Well, they do because of the fact that old special permit, for whatever reason, it has language that any changes have to come back before this board.
So are we, Chairman, are we, is that part of our purview here tonight or not?
It seems that he's asked for that. But I don't
Well, it's not, it's not Yeah, but it's non-conforming because of the existing setbacks, I believe. Setback from Flint Street.
But the structure is non-conforming. However, your bylaw allows you to make alterations to non-conforming structures as of right if they conform to existing requirements, which they do. However, the, the two thousand twenty permit has a, has a condition in it that says any further build out has to come back before this board. And I, I think that is mentioned in the staff report.
Yeah, I'm just, we don't have, we don't have an application to modify that special permit in front of us, and only that's what was noticed.
Yes, well, it shouldn't have been. It is in the application.
Mr. Chair, the legal ad does mention that the applicant is seeking to modify special permit from twenty twenty.
Yeah, I see it there. It is in the staff report.
Further buildup. I mean, but and so there's no other construction happening on site except for the accessory dwelling unit?
In the additions to the existing main house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that that reads there myself. I mean, you're, what I see the ask is for us to, to re- release the, the build out for the accessory dwelling unit. Well, I guess it says in additions.
Right, additions to the main.
Well, so are we gonna see plans for those additions to the
Yeah, they're, they're on there in, in terms of the site plans. If you click on the, the second one down, the site
Main house.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta I gotta dig through here then. Sorry, my fault.
So it expands on just both sides, not towards Flint Street.
And it conforms to the setbacks as they are today. Again, they would have been allowed as a right if not for the previous special permit.
I heard Bone Seek, I don't, I don't understand your as of right. The only thing that's as of right is nine hundred square feet and two bedrooms. And there's nothing that you get as of right from the twenty twenty special permit. You need to explain that a little better.
Correct. So as your bylaw states that a noncon, pre-existing non-conforming structure can be altered as of right if those alterations conform to existing requirements. This only applies to the main house if not, as I said, if not from the special permit that already exists.
I think you need to revisit the twenty twenty special permit.
Yeah, can you just summarize, is the barns structure? The guest cottage? No, the barn structure is an additional structure on the special permit from twenty twenty?
I believe so. I wasn't involved in the twenty twenty, but the, the structures have always been there. So that's, yes, when they mention the barn structure, they're talking about what that proposed A D U.
So the barn structure was the A D U that was restricted to not be rented out and to be only occupied from May to November, et cetera. That's, that's, this structure is gonna be torn down and rebuilt.
And I don't, as I said, I wasn't involved. I don't know why those restrictions were in place. You know, we're, we're not doing anything that wouldn't otherwise be allowed by this bylaw.
So who's been living in the barn seasonally for the past time period?
Uh, I went there. There was nobody there. It doesn't even look like anybody's living in it, but it would be, my clients bought it in twenty twenty. If anybody was living in there, it'd be guests of them. But, you know, as I said, I went to the property, it was vacant.
Are we, are we approving it as an A D U?
That is what the ask is, yes.
So the ask is for an A D U, number one, and number two, to exceed the nine hundred square feet?
Yeah, I mean, A D U can be approved by right in a way, but, I mean, I also think that this special permit from twenty twenty almost has to be you know, rescinded. Cause that puts some very specific requirements on the, on the barn. There shall be no expansion of the barn in footprint or an overall structure.
Well, that's why we've asked to modify the condition.
So you're adding two thousand square feet to the main property and you want twelve hundred square feet for the A U D?
That's correct. But the, but the barn structure A D U is not increasing from what's existing. So we're not making any, increasing any, making any increase in the changes of that square footage.
So the only thing you're really doing is taking the auxiliary structure, moving it so that it conforms to the setbacks. And it's reducing it from three to two bedrooms. And so the ask is for the increase, is for the to make it an A D U is to increase it above nine hundred square feet. Now, if you didn't ask for an A D U, you could do all that as a right, couldn't you?
If I didn't ask for the more than nine hundred square feet, generally speaking, it would be allowed as a right. But again, we have a twenty twenty special permit that needs, you know, that I need to modify to allow that.
Okay, but I mean, it could be a, a family something and, and you could, okay.
Yeah, you could have gone under the other bylaw provision to make it a family apartment if you wanted. But, you know, again, you know, if, if there was no special permits on this property, then all I'd be asking for is to exceed the nine hundred square feet.
Right. Okay, so, so essentially they have an alternative to say they don't need an A D U, keep it a family, and they could do what they want to do with it.
Yeah, I mean, we granted, we granted them that special permit with, with that that barn could be used for living purposes, but couldn't be rented and was only seasonal. I'm going from memory here, but I believe there was some issues with septic capacity and other concerns at the time. And so
So with the new emphasis of the town and the change to A D U, to change it to an A D U would seem appropriate, I guess, certainly in favorship. Am I right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm just a little concerned procedurally here because it's not just the condition, like, I understand in the condition of the twenty twenty permit, condition number, number two says that the proposed redevelopment shall represent a full build out of the lot. But also, I mean, in the findings that relate back, I think, to the special permit from nineteen ninety-eight, there was restrictions put in place that said that the barn shall not be rented out, saying the barn structure shall be seasonal, that no further modification could be done to it, there's no expansion. So, I mean, I think we have some things that carry, but again, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so that's, I guess, on, on you guys to figure out if that's if justice modifying that condition number two is sufficient.
So, let me see if I can understand, if I can clarify this. What we're, what we're asking to approve is to make this, this bar, this thing an A D U beyond nine hundred square feet.
Correct. Our A D U bylaw gives a special apartment provision that allows them, if it's bigger than that, to come before us and ask for that.
Right.
If we think it's appropriate.
Okay, and, and if that's, and plus, of course, the main house, but then I, I guess I would, if, if asked to vote on this, I would say that that's okay with me.
Does anyone else have any questions? We still have to open for public comment. Denise, do you have something?
I get, again, I thought we had sort of the precedent that when we get an applicant that has a special permit and the permit states that it's been full build, as we saw two weeks ago, that we you know, kind of feel like we stick to that. I, I don't know. I, I, I guess I'm just surprised that they're gonna start from scratch as an applicant and build an A D U that we would, they wouldn't just stick to the nine hundred square feet at this point.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't have any, I just, I guess I just don't have, I don't know. I'm just torn about the whole A D U family apartment. If it's been used up to this point for family overflow, all of a sudden that's gonna change?
Well, that was, that was the intent of the town in terms of making a whole section of A D Us.
I know, I get that. I, I, I just
Or use beyond family. It was meant to create more housing.
Right.
Is this, is this really gonna be rented to the public or is this gonna be used by family members?
Well, you know, either way, he's, they're requesting, I mean, I, I can't enter, I, I don't know what perspective is, but they're asking for an A D U within the guidelines of the town, except that it's over nine hundred square feet.
Right, again, if they wanted it to be a family apartment, they would have asked to be having a family apartment. So they're asking for it to be an A D U. And again, this is adding to the town's housing stock, rental building board to the town. And the, the bylaw gives you the ability to go beyond the nine hundred square feet. If the town did not want to allow that, then they shouldn't have given the option of having a special permit to do it. You know, and it's, is it more, is it substantially more detrimental? And we're not increasing its size and we're making it a conforming structure to, to Flint Street.
Why does it need to be so large?
I think they're just keeping basically what the existing footprint is and what's there now.
But it would be really easy to have a small area of it that's not living space if they need to keep the footprint and reduce it, but.
Well, they're, they're moving it, so it's not the same footprint in, in terms of how you wanted to find that. They're, they're moving the structure to conform to the setbacks. And so it's a whole new structure. They're gonna tear this one down, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so, so they're starting from scratch.
So
I mean, I guess, I, I, again, it would be nice if there was some sort of rationale of why it needs to be so big, like whether, you know, they're renting to someone that needs this big of a space and that's what the market's demanding, or they need to have an office in there or something. I mean, I don't really understand, I mean, nine hundred square feet is pretty sufficient for a two bedroom accessory dwelling unit.
As I say, I think they're just trying to preserve the character of what's existing. So, you know, they kept it the same in that regard.
Well, they can maintain the character at any size.
Um, all right, let's open for public comment. Anna, I don't believe we received anything, correct?
That's correct.
And I don't see anyone here from the public to speak to this. Um, so I will make, oh, David, is there anyone here for public comment in the waiting room? No?
I don't believe so at this time, no. There's nobody else here.
All right, so I'll make a motion to close the, um, close public comment on this. Any a second?
Mr. Chair, I mean, I, I, I honestly, my goal is to get this project approved of these clients. You know, if the nine hundred square feet is gonna result in a denial, I'd like to know that and, you know, be able to go back to them. If this board is, you know, satisfied that they can approve it at thirteen, the size we're proposing, then, you know, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, let me just close public comment and then we'll have, we'll deliberate on it and we can, um, we can weigh in where we're, we're leaning. Um, so I'll make a motion to close public comment. Someone seconded?
Seconded, Paul.
Paul. Roll call vote, Herb Bone Seek?
In favor.
Paul Pennard?
In favor.
Aaron Webb?
In favor.
Denise Johnson?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Uh, so public comments closed. It brings it back to us to deliberate or, um, make findings or decision. Do they all have any sort of comments here? I got a sense from Aaron, he wasn't super in favor. Denise, you detounded not super in favor. Paul, you were?
Well, you know, it, it's different if you're just gonna move the existing structure to conform. If you're gonna tear it down and rebuild, then I guess I would like to know why it has to be more than nine hundred square feet.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, I think that like with any of these that come before us, it's nice that there's, if, if they come with some sort of justification of, of why if it's you know, I, I don't know what the justification would be, but at least an explanation of why that's their intent. Go ahead, Aaron.
Well, again, I, just to, and I don't want to misquote the attorney here, but he did say that, again, they're just trying to stick within the same square footage of what was currently existing. So yeah, I'm not even not necessarily in favor of it. I just, you know, I wrestle with, with, you know, prior issues and, and cases, I guess, and, and, you know, where, where we've had this come before us before, talking about full build out. And yet, you know, as the attorneys, I think rightfully pointed out, where they're really making no change to the property. In fact, in my opinion, probably bettering it, moving it off of Flint Street a little bit further back to conform with setbacks. There is no public comment, meaning anyone who was notified of this applicant is not, you know, shown to voice displeasure if there is any. So, you know, it's a, it's a, I don't know exactly the lot per se. I, I, I think I know the area sort of well, but, um, it's, um, you know, it's a pretty big, open, wide open space out there. So, uh, I'm not necessarily not in favor. I gotta be honest, I'm, I'm I, I do wonder why, again, it has to be that size, but I, as he's pointed out, you know, that's why. And so, um.
So the, the, the other, what they also could have done was just keep it as it is and change it to an A D U with the same
Free bedrooms right now.
Well, they could, so they could change it to two bedrooms, which is what they're gonna do anyway. So they could say, okay, we're gonna eliminate a bedroom and we want to make this existing structure an A D U.
And they'd have to lose the square footage too. They'd have to get it down to nine hundred square feet.
Well, no, they could come back to us with the same thing. We want, we want
Yeah, but they couldn't do it by right. They'd have to come back to us to say
No, no, absolutely. So, so the decision would be okay, so they wanna take a bedroom out and keep it that as is, make an A D U. And the decision we're faced with, no, they want to rebuild it as an A D U.
Yeah, it may not be where, the structure itself may not be, you know, I mean, it could be rehabbed, obviously, if it's, if it's a barn. I don't know what it looks like. I haven't physically seen it, but the fact that they want to start over and build new is commendable.
Yeah, so I see the problem we're dealing with is the nine hundred square feet. And so where do you upon which do you make your decision? What's the criteria upon which we make the decision to keep it at nine hundred or to go over nine hundred? I think that's what we're all grappling with is you know, I think it, so let me propose this. In this case, uh, to go over nine hundred means that they would move it to make it conforming in terms of setbacks, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so in this case, they're moving it conforming with setbacks, but it's still larger than nine hundred.
But but they're, they're moving it to conform it. Otherwise, they could keep it the way it is and ask for uh, an A D U. And I think that would be a tougher sell.
Yes, I believe they would also have to have the restrictions on the structure removed because there's some strict, some strict restrictions on the structure. I mean, I, I feel like this was even a two meeting thing last time, you know, wrapping my brain from memory here.
For me, yeah.
Hi, Herb Bone Seeker. I'd like to just, um, we, relative to what Aaron said, it's not replacing it with the same thing. It's replacing old structure with a new structure of the same square footage. That is where the similarity ends. The conditions of the twenty twenty special permit still apply until it's rescinded in some way. We haven't run into this before. But I don't see, I just don't see any reason. I would be more in favor of leaving the existing structure and allowing a And allowing a three bedroom A D U in the existing existing structure. I just don't see any merit to this at all, any compelling reason for it to be over nine hundred square feet.
Hang on one second, Herb. Um, Aaron dropped off the call.
Come back, Aaron.
David, do we know why?
What's going on?
You know, Aaron has dropped off.
Hold on, I'm on the phone with, we're trying to get Aaron back on the phone, hang on.
Oh, okay, uh, one second. I haven't seen him come, he's not in the meeting as of right now.
David, Aaron's trying to get on, I think he might be in the.
Oh, I see, he just logged in. I'll bring him into the meeting now.
All right, Aaron's back.
He is back.
Sorry about that, I just dropped, I apologize, sorry. Um, Herb, continue. Sorry to stop you.
Okay, um, I don't know at what point you dropped off there, Aaron, but I'm really uh, pointing out that it is not. At uh, just a replacement of the same thing, it's tearing down. A building, replacing it. With, uh, now I have to get back on track, but um. It's not the same thing, it was approved before as a family apartment. With very uh, specific restrictions. Now, this is a totally different animal, and there's, there's no. Reason, just because the existing structure is thirteen hundred eighty four square feet. Which I believe is what it was, something like that. That they are by right. Allowed the same square footage? That's, that's not the case at all. And I just, I don't see any compelling reasons at all to allow anything over nine hundred square feet. Uh, if it, if they were asking for. Eleven hundred square feet or something like that, something more reasonable, but. The fifty percent increase was really no. Reason, I don't know the rental market in Marson's Mills, but, you know. What's your comp rate gonna be, comp rate gonna be for um, a rental unit there, you know? Three percent? I mean, it just doesn't make financial sense either.
Let me just add on to you, Herb. It's either nine hundred square feet or it's bigger than nine hundred square feet, there's no. Cut offline or, well, if it's eleven hundred, well, that's okay, no, it's either nine hundred. Or it's bigger than nine hundred, because you get into the same issue that we've had with swimming pools. Or anything else, is it? You know, one percent over the the allowed lot coverage or is it two point O or whatever, so. So it's either nine hundred square feet or it's more than nine hundred square feet, it's not a little bit here, a little bit there.
All right, Denise, did you have any thoughts?
Well, I I think what's important is the precedent, as we did on another matter, uh, of someone building an A U D, I mean, we're gonna get. We're gonna continuously have these things come before the board, I think we do have to have a policy of, are we sticking. To the letter of the law, nine hundred square feet, two bedrooms, or are we gonna treat these individually and make changes to that? Because this is not gonna be the last one that comes before us.
Well, I don't think we stick to nine hundred, if we stick to nine hundred, then they wouldn't come before the board. Purpose of the board is to.
But I'm saying, I think.
Well, they would have to to convert the existing structure, though. They can't just convert the existing structure without coming to us.
Well, maybe in this case, but to Denise's specific point. If we hold everybody to nine hundred square feet, then there's no reason for them to come before the board for their reason.
And I think that's what Denise is basically wanting or hoping for, that we, that people don't come to us, that that. What town council created with their own intent and, you know, public work. To figure out what the town needed was nine hundred square feet was what they decided in two bedrooms is what the town was willing to tolerate.
But they also, but they also said that if you want to exceed that, you come before us.
On a special permit case by case basis.
All right.
I think, again, what Denise is saying is like, this is becoming a little too. Common potentially that everyone just wants a big one, which. That's beyond our pay grade to to be handling, the town council needs to consider, okay, it's fifteen hundred square feet. What a two bedroom is supposed to be these days, and maybe they need to revise the ordinance.
Well, yeah, I I guess in that case, yes, but I'm just saying. They're saying nine hundred, but if they want more than that, come before us, so our job is to say, okay, what's. What's uh, what's allow, what what do we consider in each specific case? To be over, to be okay for over nine hundred square feet. If we just wanna say. If we just wanna say we won't consider anything over nine hundred square feet, I think that's against what the intent of the town was.
But it's on a special case basis, I mean, is this a special case, and if it is, why?
Well, I think that's a different question, Jake, I'm just addressing specifically Denise's point was. If it's over nine hundred square feet, we should blanket say no. And I'm just saying, no, that wasn't the intent of the town.
No, I mean, I think we just want to discourage everyone from coming in. That, oh, we can just, you know, oh, don't just ignore that in the in the ordinance, because we know we can just go to the zoning board and they'll just waive that for us.
Well, I'm saying, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm not saying to waive it. I'm just saying they have a hearing, they want it, they want to do what what the town has allowed them to do, and it's up to us to make a decision. I think what we're dealing with here is what's our criteria? To approve over nine hundred square feet, I'm not sure we have.
Exactly. Exactly, my point is not that we're gonna deal with every A U D, it's that there are going to be other cases coming forward. That want to use the A U D program, but are gonna be outside the nine hundred square feet.
Right, and and therefore, what is our criteria to say here now?
Yes, that's my point.
May I, you um. You said that it doesn't matter if it's one square foot over nine hundred or eleven hundred. Or twenty five hundred, that's a huge difference, it's a huge difference. You know, a thousand square feet, nine hundred square feet, eleven hundred, then, you know, how, what's the limit?
So what's the.
Eleven hundred is reasonable.
Well.
Reasonable here.
Why isn't twelve hundred reasonable?
Show me a reason why thirteen hundred eighty four is.
I I'm just saying.
No, Herb, I I that's not, it's, that's your opinion that it's not reasonable, I don't, again, I I agree with Paul on that, we either stick to the. Nine hundred square feet or one foot over is is. You know, it it defeats the whole purpose of the program.
I think we need to remember what Jake just said about the intent. Of this bylaw. It was carefully considered, they didn't just make this up at the town, at one town council meeting, this was carefully considered and ironed out. And there was a lot of input, and they came up with nine hundred square feet, two bedrooms, that was what the town needs. And. Then to what Denise is saying. Do you want to have five of these appeals every, every uh, session? Because that's what we're gonna end up with, if we just hand these out like candy, and I find this one especially. Um, suspects, after, you know. The first appeal in. Uh, twenty eighteen, and then the, I mean, twenty twenty, and then the, don't forget the attempted one. I mean, this is basically the same one that they withdrew. Uh, December twenty twenty two.
So, but but our role, our role is not to limit appeals. That wasn't the intent of the town, the town said, hey, there may be some cases, which. They want to go over nine hundred square feet that are okay. What we're dealing with.
Then vote in favor, I'm not gonna vote in favor.
No, no, no.
Vote in favor then.
No, no, what I'm saying is, what what is the basis we're gonna use? To say it's okay to go over nine hundred square feet.
And that's really what I was asking.
And I think that we we don't have any guidelines, you know, other than. The six months that was, that that the bylaw was debated back and forth and and how they tried to incorporate. Everyone in town's concerns by putting these restrictions in place, so I think it's a question if if we feel that. Each of these cases is a reason to, you know, ex- expand beyond that, you know, if it was. That the garage square footage of the footprint was twelve hundred square feet and they're building straight up on top of it. That would make sense to me, like, like, you know, what are they gonna like jog in somewhere or something, they're gonna build straight up, and so that. That's a situation where this, it clearly makes sense, I personally think that was the intent of of the council allowing. For things to come before us in special cases. Uh, but where this is a new structure from the ground up. It doesn't seem that it's not possible to just cut off three hundred and eighty four square feet or four hundred and eighty four square feet, or it was.
And I agree with you, Jake, I I have not heard a reason yet as to why this new structure should be more than nine hundred square feet.
And and the other thing is, I believe the town council's intent was to create more affordable housing. If you're gonna up the the footage, a square footage, does that mean it's gonna be in a different price range? For rental?
Yeah, there is an an intent for some attainability, for sure, there was no affordability tied to it per se. But, but yeah, that was up. Create more housing to make our community livable.
Yeah, so to Herb's point, I would, if if asked to vote. I would say, I need to know why we have to go above nine hundred square feet for this new structure. As an A D U.
So, I'm gonna just cut this to the chase here, attorney, it sounds like you're gonna be um. In a tough spot here, do you want to withdraw?
I mean, I would encourage you to maybe consider talking to your clients and come back to us with some sort of justification. Because I I, again, I don't think we're totally opposed to doing this, we just, we really need some strong. Reasons why, and I don't feel that's been presented yet today.
That would be my preference to go back, not withdraw, but go back to the clients to either. Uh, get their feedback as to why they need it, or maybe come back with a plan that is nine hundred square feet.
Yeah, so let's continue it, do you think, Anna, what's our schedule look like if we're continuing? We have September thirteenth, September twenty seventh, and October eleventh, so.
The September thirteenth agenda is quite heavy.
Okay.
And the September twenty seventh agenda, I believe, has two items. On it already, so there is room for the September twenty seventh meeting.
If I may jump in, Mister Chair, is the, is the September twenty seventh by Zoom?
Yes.
I would prefer that only because I I also do a lot of zoning in Mashpee, so their meetings are at six, I do have hearings before them that. That day, so the Zoom is easier because I'm close, I can go close to my office, so the twenty seventh would be preferable for me.
Okay, that's fine with us, again, I don't want to like hold your client up if they're trying to do this this. Project this winter or whatever, so I don't want to drag it on longer on our end. Um, so I'll make a motion to continue this to September twenty seven, twenty twenty three.
I'll second that.
And this is appeal number twenty twenty three dash zero one nine, uh, Herb, second roll call vote to continue appeal number twenty twenty three zero one nine. Um, Herb Bodenseek.
In favor.
Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
He's frozen.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
Aaron, make a move.
Oh, oh no, he's gone. Uh, well, we have four, um. We have four in favor, so that um, it's continued to um, September twenty seven, twenty twenty three.
Okay.
Thank you for the time and um, and and dealing with our deliberations on that, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, I appreciate the feedback, so I will uh, talk to my clients and we'll see you in a in a month.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we've got correspondence, the Department of Environmental Protection has given public notice of a chapter ninety one license application for one sixty five. Lake Elizabeth Drive, Centerville. And the Southwind Plaza A N R has been referred to the Cape Cod Commission as a mandatory development of regional impact. Um, any other matters not reasonably anticipated? Upcoming hearings, September thirteenth, Anna said it's busy, that's in person, September twenty seventh, Zoom, and October eleventh. I'm, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh.
Uh, roll call vote, because we're on Zoom, uh, Herb Bodenseek.
I'm in favor, what about Aaron, how are we gonna uh, adjourn the meeting without a vote from Aaron?
He can, he can stay on.
He can just stay on all. Leave him clocked in, uh, Paul Pennard.
Yeah, in favor.
Denise Johnson.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz, if you're there, I'll be there, Larry. Uh, so we are adjourned.